All right, it's 6:17, we're gonna start this meeting. I'm gonna call the Raytown Board of Alderman Committee as a whole, July 6, 2021, meeting to order at 6:17 PM. Who's gonna call the roll? You gonna call the roll? Teresa won't be here till 7:00.
All right. Okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Alderwoman Memes. This is real.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. Alderwoman Hayden.
Yes, I'm here.
Make sure you push your button so you're recorded.
I'm here.
Alderman Ward.
Here.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Here.
Alderman Bill Van Buskirk.
Here.
Alderman Walters.
Here.
Alderman Asia. Alderman Myers.
Here.
And Alderwoman Mary Jane Van Buskirk.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. Okay. Move through for, I need a motion for the approval of the June 1st, 2021 Committee of the Whole meetings. Do I hear a...
So moved.
Louder. Ms. Emerson has the first, Ms. Mary Jane Van Buskirk, second. Do we have any conversations, any... All right, hearing none, call the roll, please.
Alderwoman Emerson.
Yes.
Alderwoman Mary Jane Van Buskirk.
Yes.
Alderman Walters.
Yes.
Alderman Scott.
Yes.
Alderwoman Hayden.
Yes.
Alderman Myers.
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Buskirk.
Yes.
Alderwoman Memes. Oh, I think we lost her. Alderman Ward.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Passed with eight votes. Chief Kuehl, what do you have for us, sir?
Do a slight introduction.
If you would push your green button there.
Before Chief Kuehl starts, I was gonna do a slight introduction. We just, committee as a whole was an opportunity for us to also have our departments present. This month, we're having Chief Kuehl in the Police Department do a presentation. He can kind of give you some updates or some things we changed and something he's done and put in place and instituted. Chief Kuehl, as we all know, has been on board since April 1st of 2020, 2019, actually. 2020. Chief, you been here...
20.
2020. 2020. So, just over one year, so...
April Fool's Day.
So, we'll go ahead and get started from there. You got it, Chief.
All right, thank you very much. Am I turned on right, Michael? Is everything okay?
Yeah, it's going good. We can hear you.
Good. Okay, so, I want to cover quite a bit, and I want to do it in a fairly succinct timeframe because I know there's a lot to do before the next meeting. So, this has been a strange year, so probably the presentation will be somewhat the same. I wanted, you know, it's been very interesting, and so I wanted to give you kind of a roadmap of what I wanted to talk about tonight and the flow, for lack of a better term. I'm gonna start with some general philosophical things because I think it's important to know the mindset of the CEO of the law enforcement agency. And also, I think it's important to know some of the tools that we use to go through the problem-solving process, as well as how we prioritize things. As you know, over the last year...
Recording in progress.
Even in your...
Recording stopped.
Shorter tenure, you see the number and the myriad of different issues that hit law enforcement landscape that we're in and things like that. But if you don't have a structure and you don't have a foundation, you don't have at least a framework to work from, everything gets really scattered around. I think it's important for you to know the framework that we use. And then we're gonna get down into some specific items, and then I'm gonna try to leave some time for some questions. If I'm not clear about something, in the, while we go through this, please stop and let me know. But some of the things that might be on your mind, we may cover a little bit later in the presentation, so I'll try to leave plenty of time at the end for some questions. So, for those of you that were part of thy initiation process or my hiring process, you heard me talk about a lot of cultures that are part of a police department. The culture of a police department is actually a number of subcultures. It's a culture of accountability, a culture of transparency, it's a culture of training, it's a culture of communication, it's a culture of empathy, because cultures have to do with habits. So, we spent a lot of time over the last year establishing my habits as a priority. And I can tell you this, it's one of the most outstanding teams I've worked with, from the city administration to the department heads, to my command staff, to the field supervisors, to the civilian and support personnel, everybody. It's been amazing, but it is important to recognize that habits are developed over time. You don't just blink an eye and say, "Trust me." You earn that over time. So, when you have a culture of trust, that doesn't happen overnight, it takes a while. And so, but sometimes inch pebble stones are as powerful as milestones. You know, you move a little bit at a time, sometimes you don't get as far as you want, and I'll share a little bit of that. One of the things that we talked about early on is I have a very unique approach to risk management. I think risk management's been beat to death. I have a process of awareness plus action. Did you or should you have known about it, and what'd you do? That's what I hold my command staff and everybody in my department accountable for, myself included. Did I or should I have known about it, and what did I do about it? And was it good? Could I have done better? Or did I just have a really bad day? Or did it work? And when you, because I do think that complexity is the enemy of clarity, so I try to keep things as simple as I can. God didn't bless me with one of those cubicle minds. I have decent common sense, and I've relied on that my whole life, so I try to get things broken down to the least common denominator. One of the things that I think it was important to focus on during my first year was to create this strategic versus operational shift. In my humble opinion, based on the years of experience I've had in this field, I think that your CEO or your chief should be 75% of his time, or her time should be spent in the strategic realm and 25% operational. And so, on December 6th, because I changed the job description, and we talked about this some since I got here last April, Randy Hudson was promoted from major to deputy chief, and he was assigned the operations bureau, which is pretty clear because that level should be 75% operational, 25% strategic. That way, I do not worry ever what goes on in the department when I'm talking to you, when I'm at an event, when I'm at the Herndon Center, when I'm up at the Training Academy, when I'm watching seminar, I'm evaluating training. You can't do all of it. We have 86,400 seconds in a day. You can't make any more, and you can't take any away. How we spend that's very important. That strategic split is working very well. I think that we communicate every day. I have an incredibly powerful team, and they handle the operations. I sort of point the compass in the direction it needs to go, and I'm comfortable giving them the latitude to figure out how to get it there. And they do a fantastic job considering the resources they have. The other thing that was important to do was to do an organizational, an organization structure evaluation and an assessment. And I can tell you that what I look for is what I talked about when I, when I put in for the job. What I'm looking for is slack. Now, slack has a negative connotation, but it isn't really. Slack is unnecessary rules and practices that slow you down and negatively impact the efficiency and effectiveness of an organization. Slack isn't a bad thing. Slack is a natural byproduct of an organization at work because rules, practice, policy, and all of those related efforts were put in place for a very good reason at a time and a place. What we have to do is make sure that they're still valid and they're still viable in the current structure. And if we don't do that, then we wind up with a whole bunch of slack. And that is a whole bunch of rules and practices that slow us down because they're no longer applicable. I can tell you that what I, what I decided or determined was that we Patrol and Investigations, when I took over, were the two primary functional units in the police department. We had no proactive resources. Patrol and Investigations were both understaffed, and there's a high, there's a hard line for Patrol, an industry standard that we can't dip below because the backbone of any organization, any law enforcement organization, are handling calls for service. So, we make sure that we don't dip below that. But I can tell you that they did a fantastic job evaluating slack, tightening things up, and we were able, despite the fact that we didn't want to dip below that number, we were able to spin up an impact squad, which we'll talk a little bit more about. Some of you who were here before are aware of what that was. Our first actual proactive, proactively assigned resources within the department. They work directly out of the operations bureau, and they're just that. They're an impact squad. They're designed to have impact, where and when, where and when they're needed. They're designed to be very agile. Their life is in light pencil, they knew that coming in. Things change on the fly, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit more in a minute. The other thing I did is, it's important to look at the duties and responsibilities of your command staff. It's important to be defensible with the resources you've been assigned and make sure that you're using all you can where you are with what you have before you ask for anything else. I can tell you now that I looked at the duties and responsibilities of command staff, as well as their span of control, which are the number and types of their direct reports and their immediate chains of command. And I can tell you unequivocally, after three and a half decades of experience, that if anything, they are loaded on the bit, a bit heavy with operational responsibilities. Because you see, at the command level, there's a strategic responsibility for Randy, the deputy chief, and there's a strategic responsibility for commanders. That is how the process of continuous improvement happens. And if they're always on the far side of firefighting, then they don't get to do enough to prevent the fires. So, we're working on some of that, but I can tell you that, that they are loaded significantly with duties and responsibilities. And we try and shift some around, we look at different opportunities to maybe delegate some of those as we move forward, but they are working hard, and, and they're very, they're a very talented staff. The other thing I think that you need to know or understand is, what goes on down there in the basement, right? What is the general problem-solving framework that we use, and how do we prioritize things? Because the thing about prioritization is, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. And that results in something I'll talk about in a minute, and it just doesn't work. Everything gets done halfway, and nothing really gets accomplished, and it's really hard. You wind up chasing your tail if you try to do too many things because money, manpower, materials, time, energy, and effort are all limited resources. You have to be really careful about how you use them, and you have to use them in a defensible way. So, I can tell you, and the reason I want to share these is because as we open up and as we get into public forums and as we sit together at round tables trying to determine and work our way through specific issues that your constituents have, you're going to hear some of these terms from me because I've been using them for a long time, and I don't have any intention of changing them because best predictor of future performance is past successes, and these work well. You'll hear me at certain times bring up the SARAH problem solving, scanning, analysis, response, assessment. That's what I use. That's what our department uses. Scanning is obviously the identification of the problem. The analysis is basically, why is something going on, right? It's peeling the onion back. It's a, it's a, it's a real boots-on-the-ground analysis about what's really happening and what's causing it, not just the symptoms, but the real cause. And I call that an RCA, it's a root cause analysis. You have to peel the onion back a lot further than most people do to really get at it. And then your response, this is the interesting place. This is where I usually have to bring this model up because a response isn't necessarily, it's not necessarily wise to throw everything you can think of, including the kitchen sink, at a problem. Because again, money, manpower, and materials are limited resources. So, what we have to do is we look at responses, we put them out on the table, we may determine the two or three that are likely to have the highest impact, and then we throw the switch on those. Then what happens is, we put them into a production environment, we, we actually ship those solutions or those responses, then we move into the assessment phase. Did or did it not accomplish what we were trying to do, and to what degree? At that point in time, it circles us back, do we need to do more? I can tell you a perfect example, a lot of things, if you've heard of the word SEPTED, it's Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. I'll use some of the parks in Kansas City and here. You make some changes in the way the environmental design is to prevent some of the things that are going on. And you see how they work, and then you go back to the drawing board. So, it's this cyclical pattern, but if you try to throw everything at it, you can't do it. And you wind up doing everything kind of halfway instead of a few things all the way. So, that SARAH problem-solving model is good because it also has built-in accountability with that assessment phase. And it's defensible and it's easily understandable by the public, by me, by everyone else, it's easy to explain. So, with all of the things that are floating around, how do we decide what to prioritize? Well, I, I use a thing, it's called the focus funnel. Take all of the tasks that we have in front of us, and we put them in this funnel. And the very first thing we do is, do we really need to do this? Is there really a need? Like, we're gonna talk about crime and fear of crime. Is this really an issue, or is it a perceived issue? What does the data show us and things like that? So, is it something that can be eliminated because it's not, it's not really an issue or it's related to something else? Is it something that can be automated? There's been, there was a lot of effort for a while about automating traffic tickets. That really didn't work out that well. You saw the red light cameras, right? That was an effort at automation. I can tell you in law enforcement, we go past automation pretty quickly. And then we move into delegate. Do I have resources? Do I have people on board? Do I have the ability to delegate this to a patrol division, to a patrol group, to an individual? And what happens is, if, if that is either done now or later, if we haven't been doing it later, then we put it back in the funnel, so we never lose it. Okay? So, we never lose it, we just look at it, maybe because now, maybe because, yes, we want to do it, but not right now because we have higher priorities. But maybe in a month, we can't forget that this goes on, so it just continues to go through that. And what it does is, it eliminates something called priority dilution. And that is an epic fail that I see a lot in law enforcement because the people are not willing to have difficult conversations, that there's no more juice left in the lemon, right? They always want to continue to do more with less, they commit to doing more with less, and they wind up doing less with less. Why? Because it's very predictable that you're gonna do less with less. It's much easier to have an honest conversation about what we can do and how we can do it and what we need to do more, instead of creating a lot of fluff that we can't deliver on. I don't think that's fair to anybody, and I think it's a, it tees up the culture of transparency. Culture transparency doesn't have anything to do with just having comfortable decisions, it has to do with having honest decisions. That's what transparency is all about. It's easy to have those on good days, a little less easy to have those on cloudy days, but they're nonetheless necessary. The other thing I want to hit on is, is this is always an interesting one, is recruitment, retention, and attrition. Those are huge issues in law enforcement today. They're huge issues in, in all of the world, in all of the corporations in America. But I can tell you, in the last year, we hired six law enforcement personnel. We lost six. It's no one's fault, some didn't make it through the academy, some had personnel issues that went on internally, some decided it was time to leave this profession, and some retired. That is the natural landscape of law enforcement, which is why we press hard for recruitment. We do not, nor will we ever have a recruitment division or recruitment element. 100% of us are responsible for recruitment. You find somebody at Sonic that thinks the police car looks kind of neat, you ask him if it's something they want to do. Are they interested in this? Do they want to pursue it more? The opportunities that are out there for the people that are interested in this profession are observed every day by our line staff, by our first-line supervisors, by me, and I have them point them directly to me. I think we gotta hold people by the hand, we gotta get them through the process. It is not exactly easy to recruit people in the current environment that we're in. It just is what it is. It's not a, it's not a judgment, it's not a, it's not condemning anything, it's simply an observation, you know? Who wants to come on board and not make all that much, but risk everything? Takes a special person, but they're out there, so we continue to try to find them. I will say that their decisions to come to a particular department are based on a lot of things. People always want to know, how do you get the right people on the bus? It's the wrong question. The question is, how do you create a bus everybody wants to be on? And then they line up at the door, but that's only part of it. So, the other things, that's the, that's the qualitative side of the equation. How do they feel, right? Do they, do they like being here? The quantitative side is important. What are the pay and benefits? How does it compare to, to the agencies that we compete with? All of those are important. So, you know, I just, you know, when those things come up, your favorable consideration or your deep dive into looking, looking at the issues that help us would be appreciated because it's, it's really challenging. We are up for the challenge. We've got two graduating Thursday from the academy. I'm excited to get them. Given the commencement speech, I'm honored to do that, and I'm excited to get them plugged in. We have one, a gal on break-in, she's awesome, from another academy, and I have put together incentive packages for lateral transfers. Because a lot of people are ready to retire, but they certainly aren't done, and they certainly have amazing capabilities. And so, we have opportunities for them to come over. And if we can bring a few people in who have 20, 25, 30 years of experience for a while, you can see the gap that that fills. So, we're trying to approach this from every angle. There are two, there are two rather large, heavily weighted projects that I talked about early, and I want to give an update on those. One is something that's called Lexipol. It's an industry-standard risk management solution for policy development, dissemination, training, user acknowledgements, and updates. So, obviously, policies and practices when police departments are under incredible scrutiny, as they should be. I won't talk about the optics, I have opinions about it, but it doesn't really matter to me how I, it doesn't affect how I operate. Because the bottom line is, this is an interesting observation or vantage point for law enforcement. Whether you have two people, five people, 50 people, 500 people, or 50,000 people, your policy manuals are gonna be about the same size. Because that two-person department and that 50,000-person department have to be prepared to encounter exactly the same things. Whether the volume with which they encounter those is different, which it is, doesn't really matter. Your policies, procedures, practices, and your training have to all be in line to do that. So, you can imagine the challenge for smaller agencies. Kansas City, Missouri, as a mid-sized department, has probably 25 individuals assigned to the research and development division, two sergeants, a captain, a major, and a deputy chief, who do nothing but policy revision. Where do you find those resources in smaller departments, a place like Lexipol? Lexipol is staff with subject matter experts, attorneys, nothing like a good legal legal in your corner. They have paralegals that watch all the court cases, and what they do is they put the policies together, they watch for changes, and they disseminate those. So, Deputy Chief Hudson has been running point on the sync. That's the first stage. You have to sync your old policies with Lexipol's policies. And I can tell you that they use industry standards, they use federal guidelines, state statutes, and then any modifications that you need to make that are specific to your agency. You have to put all of that in a hopper with your current policies, and you have to sync those up. We're almost done. We are almost ready to close the book on the old policy manual and spin up the new one, which is all cloud-based, it's all online. Every single officer has to physically read, acknowledge, and sign that they know and understand the policies. It's an incredible tracking mechanism. It's very important because I always look at things like, am I in a deposition? Am I having to answer questions? And when they ask me, how do you put your policies together? And I say, well, I sit under a cool, a really nice tree in Coleman Park or Carnegie Park, and we just come up with some things. That's not what I want to answer. I want to be able to put Lexipol on there because guess what happens in the deposition then? It ends. Because everyone understands the background, the strength, and the solidarity of, of this program. Now, when we get it spun up, we'll also tell them how often we want them to send out little quizzes to the officers so that they will have to answer three or four questions about different policies on an ongoing basis, all of which will be tracked, all of which will exist in the cloud-based system, all of which we can access to see how things are going, ourselves included. Because the very first person I look at when things don't go quite right is, what did I do? Then it trickles down from there. What did I not do? And it trickles down from there. The other really heavy lifting project that's going on is something called Guardian Tracking. It's a double-edged, again, it's a formal cloud-based tool for identifying and intervening, a word we hear a lot, to improve problematic behaviors. But it's also used to recognizing and celebrate successes, which is often overlooked in the big scheme of things. We're quick to criticize, and we're often slow as an industry to, to give a shout-out when people do good things. In this formal system, we see everyone who makes any entry in that system, whether it's a plan of correction for something that I didn't do well, that I could have done better, in, in all aspects of those policies and procedures that Lexipol puts in place, what was done as the necessary corrective behavior and how I'm responding to that. It all exists in that system. What also exists in that system is all the out-of-boys and out-of-girls. Nice job. The empathy or sympathy that you showed on that particular call is unbelievable. It's very easy to do. Field supervisors, officers can recognize peers, subordinates can recognize commanders, commanders can recognize subordinates. It all goes into a system, and there are all permissions in there. So, when I come in in the morning every day, I get to see every good thing and every less-than-optimal thing that happened. And I get to put a comment in there. Man, that's great. I'm sorry I didn't get to see you last night because I know you work midnights, but that is exactly the kind of thing that we're looking for in this police department. Send or save, and guess what? It shows up in that officer's inbox. Comment from the chief, comment from the deputy chief, comment from a commander. That creates a cyclical accountability, and it also relates, it also makes people feel good, like they get recognized for things. If the system works like it should, and we're getting there, there is a nine-to-one ratio of accolades to corrective comments. That is the kind of department that people want to work for, where you're recognized. And it's also trackable, it's defensible, and it's something you can produce in court, in a deposition, or anywhere else. Yep, you know what? Bob had some issues here, but, gosh, let me show you what he's been doing for the last three years. It's important for perspective. Again, Randy Hudson and the command staff, my hat's off to them because they do all the heavy lifting, and by the time it gets to me, it's quick and easy. Because they're doing the operational work, and I get to just do the strategic approval or oversight, or, man, that looks great, or I get to ask a question, and it goes back into the operational mode, and it comes back adjusted or exactly, you know, the way we came up with it as a team. Because I can tell you that at the core of everything we do is collaboration. It's an amazing, powerful thing, collaboration. We're having a focus on training. COVID shut everything down, and training is critical to this industry, so we're a little behind the eight ball, we're gonna play catch-up. I'm back doing some instruction and teaching at the Regional Training Academy, and, and in turn, we're gonna figure out a way to get some of the officers, when manpower allows us, to some of the training that's up there. You heard a lot about the Impact Squad. Impact Squad's a very fluid thing, and I want to go through real quickly just some of the things that they've been working on since December. When we put them back in place, we also reopened the drug complaint line for the citizens, and that has resulted in actual prosecutions for individuals affiliated with doing things they shouldn't do. So, we have citizen-generated drug activity investigations, investigation and case submission for all drug and weapon-related cases. They do the heavy lifting on that, and it's very time-consuming, especially working with our partners. Planning and execution of traffic operations for all COVID-19 testing that went on in 2020. Review and coordination of all citizen special event permits. Speed enforcement to include all of our Missouri traffic grants. Coordination with Code Department on outstanding warrant clearances, providing assistance to the investigation unit on major cases because they're kind of understaffed right now. Assisting the patrol division during peak activity times and warrant sweeps, just to name a few. They are busy, busy, busy. But what I think is more important, and this is why I don't provide necessarily specific numbers related to the Impact Squad, because all I want you to do is think of those things and the ripple effect that that has of impacting these. The ripple effect is the most important thing. If you can get a sustainable ripple effect going in the right direction, that's when it knocks all the other things down. And since you can't measure prevention, and that's what we're going for, that's one of the things that they work very hard on. Thing I want to wrap up on, so there's a little bit of time, is obviously a discussion of crime. It's a hot topic these days, it's in the media all the time. There's really two factors, in my humble opinion, and only two, that are related to crime. It's crime and the fear of crime, and they're not the same thing. They are different. They're often blended together, they shouldn't be. They do affect and impact each other. Crime is what actually happens. And the questions that we ask is, is, is something that occurred indicative of a pattern or is it an isolated incident? It's different, we respond differently. If it's an isolated incident versus a pattern of behavior, you can obviously understand how we would deploy resources difference. Are we looking at all crime or just violent crime? From what vantage point are people forming their opinions? Because violent crime, primarily homicides, agri assaults involving a firearm, which is what together we call bullet to skin, those two things together are front and center in the news. And I understand that, I'm not criticizing that at all, but it's the only thing in the news. It's the only thing we hear about. It's terrible, it's tragic, the loss of any life is incredibly tragic. And we could unpack that for a very long time, which I'd love to do anytime any of you want to go to lunch. You just let me know. But I can tell you that it's much, that crime, that bullet to skin is a very, very complicated equation with many, many variables. We have people that are so angry over a shoelace comment on Facebook that they're going to shoot their friend. That speaks to an issue maybe a little bit past our ability to manage it by ourselves and queues up another conversation. I can tell you that we only have, I need to give an incredible shout out to our investigative staff who need a lot more bodies. We only have one unsolved homicide for the year. And I expect that that's going to be taken care of as some more evidence rolls in shortly that we're waiting on. That is pretty incredible and I would put that statistic up against any police department of any size, anywhere, any place, any time. It is very rare. Not only does it speak to the hard work of them, it speaks to the mindset of the community that we live in, the willingness of people to, to help us because we can't chase leads if we don't have leads to chase. But I can tell you, here's some interesting thing that gives some context of the virtually every other crime category that is often ignored. And I don't want to ignore it tonight. Robbers have decreased 52% compared to this time last year. Just don't see that in, and this is fairly indicative nationwide of a lot of things. There are pockets where crime's just completely out of control, separate conversation. Property crime is the lowest it's been since 2010. Lowest levels of burglaries and larcenies in a decade. Auto thefts have dropped 27% compared to the same time last year. Shoplifting's at an all-time low. Now, do those have the same impact as the violent crime? Well, of cour-, no, we don't mean to do that. But what we do mean to do is to create some context and some framework. So that when people are deciding whether it's okay or safe to go to the store or whether something's going to happen in Family Dollar or Walmart or Hy-Vee, they need to have all the information, not just bits and pieces of it. Because then they can form their own opinions. And that's why we also have transparency about what we're doing and what we're not doing and where we focus our efforts. So that's kind of the quick and down and dirty discussion on crime. Obviously, it's at the core of what we do. So how do we, how do I figure out if I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing, what I'm supposed to be doing, how I'm supposed to be doing it? It's, it's an interesting chair to sit in as the CEO of a law enforcement agency. And this, what I'm about to share with you requires a great deal of trust that's established over time. I am a fan of what they call 360-degree evaluation. That means that I solicit feedback from my subordinates, my colleagues, supervisor, sitting over here to my right and myself. Try to be pretty introspective. Try to ask first what I did wrong or what I didn't do that I could have done better. And I'll tell you as an example, I knew that it was getting the traction that it needed to because my deputy chief has said to me a couple of times, you know, there's a couple of things that you've had on the back burner that you wanted us to do as a priority and you keep putting them on the back burner. I think maybe you need to stop worrying about a couple of things over here and work on those. Yes, you're right. Thank you very much, may I have another? Because sometimes each of us have blind spots and I don't see it. But if I don't have people telling me I'm walking out in traffic or maybe I need to change lanes a little bit, then I'm just going to, by the time I figure it out, I'm going to be 10 miles down the road. Instead of he's going to grab me by the collar and he's going to bring me back over here and go, you keep talking about this, you need to do it. You know, you're exactly right. That is when, and that's what we do at the table. We have a commander's roundtable once a week and that's what we call it. It's a roundtable because there's no rank in the room. Right? There's no, there's no offense to be had or levied. And over time, it's evolved to various, very open communication. What we all did right, what we all did wrong, what we all did better, could do better and what we just flat messed up. But when you make those early corrections, awareness plus action, it always circles back to that. Slight corrections made early on prevent epic failures later on. Can you prevent all of them? No, some of them happen in a spur of a moment. But that is a bit of a global overview of what's gone on in the last year. But I think as we move forward as a team and we spend some time together, even though it may require some counseling sessions for you, you need to know what's in my head once in a while. And so this is my framework, this is my operating system. There are upgrades because I'm surrounded by great people who will upgrade it. But the general operating system doesn't change much because it's effective and it works. And I'm not big on, I'm not big on status quo if it doesn't work, but I'm not big on change if it doesn't. But I am big on making sure we keep a close eye on both of those things. So that said, it's about 10 of. I tried to leave about five minutes for questions or, or anything that's on your mind that I might not have covered.
Chief, thank you very much for a great presentation. We really appreciate that. So if somebody wants to speak, let's learn how to do this right off the bat. Greg Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, your conversation about the feedback and stuff like that, I appreciate that. And we need to set up a policy of such, where we can have that type of communication back and forth in my mind. Because I know I've had conversations with you in the past where I have complained, sometimes bitterly about things. I've also had conversations where I've told you, hey, these officers did a fantastic job on what they did. And I'm sure from what you just said and from knowing you, as we've worked together, that you look to put all that together to find how to make the straight path going forward. And I think that all members on the board, as individuals, we probably meet with more of the public on an individual basis than the rest of you do in our day-to-day lives because we live there amongst them. So what's your opinion? If you have something, do you want everything to wash through Damon before it comes to you? Or how, how do you want to do this?
Well, I can tell you here, I can tell you what is not my duty, responsibility or desire to make any policy or decision-making about how, any of the rules that affect you or what your operating system is with the city administration. That is outside of my lane. Damon Hodges is my boss. I will not have a conversation with anybody in this room that he does not know about. And I will not violate any of the rules.
I've already made the rule that that's.
And so whatever you all work out as a framework, that's the framework that I'll work within. I'm very open, but I also have a great deal of respect for chain of command. I live in a paramilitary organization and, and I'll honor those rules.
Thank you, Chief. And it still all goes through whether Tim or not.
Have it through Damon. So Damon, you'll probably be hearing from me in the future quite a bit.
Okay, Mr. Myers.
Chief, thank you. That was, that's always awesome when you come up here and speak. You know, first and foremost, I don't envy your guys' job right now.
Thank you.
At any time. You know, just perusing Facebook and social media, I see great things from the public. I know that you, you're always looking for feedback from within the organization, but outside of the organization, I've seen a complete 180. It's been, it's been a breath of fresh air to see that from the community. You guys are doing awesome and the stats that you gave us, even better. I did want to see, I know you can probably give a 30,000-foot view of this, but I don't know how detailed you can get, but the progress with Raytown United.
Yeah, the progress with Raytown United is, it's, it's great. I can tell you that what we, what we've done is we've established some boots-on-the-ground logistical things that we needed to make sure were in place. The officers now have a form to fill out. Any, because the officers are the ones that sees the people in need, right? They see everything that goes on out there and now they have a conduit to all the resources formed by Sisters of Christ, by Raytown United, by all of the work with Jackson County Combat. And I can tell you that if they literally drive down the street and see a family that's on their last diaper, they fill out a form, Happy Bottom shows up the next day with diapers. You take that low level all the way up to the highest level, mental health, you know, assistance, everything you can think of, all the resources that exist, there's now a conduit there. And I can tell you that the crime analysts are working on identifying the 25, top 25 individuals that probably need some proactive resources and, and they're ready to go. But I appreciate you bringing that up because we're just in the, just prior to production phase of rolling that out. But there's been a fantastic effort to put that, to put that together because there was definitely a disconnect between the needs and the ability to, to deliver on those needs. And they closed that gap and the relationships are great. And it's an incredibly great collaborative effort.
Leretha Hayden and then Bill, and then we'll be out of time and be ready to start our next meeting, so.
Chief, thank you so much for all you do and, and just my thanks to your whole department.
Thank you.
I know that you have started some heavy recruitment and I talked, you talked about, a little bit about that. How do we compare pay-wise? And what would keep someone from wanting to be a part of the Raytown Police Department?
You know, I think that, I think that the best, I think that looking, I'm looking forward to the results of a pay study that really gets down in the weeds. I think in some form and fashion, we may be below what the average of some of the other local departments are. We have some attractive qualities of Raytown, our shifts, you know? We don't necessarily have a residency requirement, but I think that, you know, pay and benefits is always a big one. And so I'm glad that that's on the radar. And I think we've got to figure out where we are and then come up with a plan about getting where we need to be.
All right, and last but not least, Bill Van Busker. Maybe, there you go.
Thank you. Chief, thank you for the job you're doing. I, I appreciate it. And I just wanted you to know that I have had constituents contact me, we have had interaction with you personally and they were elated and delighted that that happened and surprised that it happened, that you took the time to, to contact them and talk to them about situations they had personally or things going on in their, in their neighborhoods. And anyway, just wanted to make you aware.
Well, I appreciate it. And then I'll, I'll leave you, I'll leave you all with this, since we're right at the end. I am blessed with the city the size where I actually can call everyone back. I think that since I took over, I stopped keeping track, but I've returned every phone call myself. I don't consider that to be a pat on the back, I think that's my responsibility. Bigger cities aren't able to do that. This is a perfectly sized city to be able to do that, but it is labor-intensive. But I can tell you the importance of making sure that people are understood before you try to help them understand. Since, since April 1st and the implementation of that commitment, we have not had a single formal complaint filed against a police officer in Raytown. I'm not saying that they have perfect days. What I'm saying that is that we also have a culture of ownership. And when we look into it and I call them back and go, you know what? Not our best day. Here's some things we're doing to improve. Because what they have to remember and what we have to remember is that this is a, this is a deeply human interaction that we have. And the common humanity that we share isn't perfect. And as long as we own that and move on, then we'll be better every day for it as a community and as a police department.
Thank you. Bonnie Memes, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had your hand up because your screen's about half. There you go, now I can see you. You got about two minutes at most. I can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now you can hear, yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. I wanted to thank the chief and also because.
You've got two, you've got two devices going at the same time, Ms. Memes. That's where the.
Yes, I do, because one of them keeps dropping off.
Turn down the volume on one of them then.
Okay, I'll see if I know what I'm doing. Okay, how's that?
Yeah, it's still doing it.
Uh-oh. I'm trying. I'll turn one off. Okay, how's that? Did I turn it off? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to thank the chief because I saw a couple of our officers that stopped a couple of young men. And what I was pleased to see them take the patience to hear them out. And I understand the protocol and putting them in handcuffs and stuff. But after they heard, they heard them out, they released them. So I was just glad to see them taking that process of, you know, thinking and, and, and working with the community at that point. Mr. Ward brought a, sent an email about a lady that had a complaint. And I also, I wanted to thank you because at her complaint, there was an officer sitting at the end of the block that was giving tickets for those that were speeding down it. So I wanted to make sure Alderman Ward knew that they had followed up on it. The other thing I wanted to thank you for, something you brought up is about the protocol and how to respond. There's a lot of things I don't like to get in the weeds in your department because your department goes in so many different dynamics that are confidential. So I think that's why the process was put in place to go through the city administrators. But I appreciate what you brought up, only because I've got to see you on both sides from this, from Kansas City to Raytown and watching the improvements that you're making. I am pleased to see our officers are more relaxed and following your leadership. So that's all I wanted to say is thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Memes. Also, before we go to our seven o'clock meeting, you might want to get ahold of Michael and see if he can help you with, because you're still reverberating. I'm not sure how to fix that for you, but if you can get somebody to see if they could help you. It's just, it's in your volume part, so. Anyway, all right, thank you very much, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, just now saw you too. Sorry, pictures keep jumping around with people getting on and off, yes.
That's okay. I just wanted to, to make a comment for all the aldermen. What I've noticed is the microphone seems to be very directional. And if you're facing the microphone and it sounds great and you turn your head to look at somebody else, the volume is dropping out pretty dramatically, so.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. We're going to adjust some of this stuff as we go along here. So Chief, again, great presentation. And I know we've had a lot of conversations about a lot of this and I really, really, really appreciate your efforts and know that they're leading to good things and, and building on what we already had. It was a fantastic police department. So I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I believe Ms. Emerson had the first and Mr. Ryan Myers had the second. Let's do this by affirmation. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, we were, we will be adjourned, be back in here at.